All right, so let's call the order the September three twenty twenty four work session of lower self attention board supervisors, everyone could join me in the pledge allegiance. Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment, person only on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to be recognized? Hearing no one, move on. Public Works Director, Mr. Jones.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Been awhile. Just update on some projects. Bridge. HK has been awarded the contract. Traffic planning and design is the construction manager. Don't have any schedule yet. I'm hoping to hear a start date and also regarding the storage areas, safety areas. Roberts Road, nothing to the county on that bridge. Waiting for them to get back to us. They agreed to the the changes. Property are aware of the so way more advised way. Uh, Oak Drive, right turn lane, extension and sidewalk. This is for a grant application. Continue working with the two property owners uh near Moyer Road. On right away acquisition. Our twenty twenty four road program. Cape City work has been completed. The Nova chip on Landis and Moyer roads has been been done. Uh, we still have a base repair contract to complete and also paving on Indian Creek Road. Uh, from eight Rockville Road from. May or one thirteen down to Freemings Bowl. But that's still the works waiting for. Cooler weather which we're now getting into so that we didn't have hot asphalt for the trucks going down the hill bringing issues with the new paving. So South of Quarry, continue working with EPA and their contractor. Regarding the road closure, which is scheduled for middle of September. And it's gonna be probably an eighteen month closure.
If the closure before or after the public meeting that we just got notice on?
It's gonna be right about the same time.
Might be nice if they waited till after the public meeting before they closed it?
Well, they will be installing advanced warning signs.
Okay.
Their message boards that are going going out this week, probably tomorrow. Um, at both ends, just alerting everyone as to when and as to the closing and the dates. Um, yeah, public information meetings Monday, September sixteen, six P M here. Uh, public works and community center facilities, I guess C K S working on a survey. Of the pool area, the parking area, so that we can uh so that they can develop a concept plan for. For that location and see if we can get that to work. Uh, we met with representatives of Encore Senior Center. Get a better sense for their operations, their goals and their financial viability now and moving forward. So we had that information to plug into our programming. Uh, we're in sixty three and one thirteen traffic signal modernization, which should be starting in very near future. Signal poles have been delivered and paid for, so they were the long lead time that we're waiting for, so. Uh, for the contract is scheduled to end the end of December. So. That'll happen soon. Our safety striping and signing signage projects, part of the Arling Grant for the bike lanes and additional signage. Uh, probably been advertised by Stephanie and her teams. For coming up for this fall. Our Yoda Road Sidewalk Project, continued communications with residents on the project to iron out the details. It's at the Main Street Sidewalk. This is from Quarry Road to Ruth Road. Uh, working on getting those business, three businesses there, getting their signs relocated outside of the right away. So we don't have that issue with the uh with the grant. Uh, cameras at all apart or wiring is completed and hopefully the camera will be installed this week or next, so. That was a long time coming.
Do we have any luck with uh getting some electricity to the pavilion there too?
We haven't, but we've made provisions to to extend it, so we've uh. We've added an additional junction box at the last camera pole so that we can then take it from there and go to the uh. To the pavilion to provide electric there and then all the wiring is run. Uh, to accommodate electric there and also to for parking lot lights if we decide to put lights on top of that camera poles. So. The being done. Just have to get the the conduit to the the pavilion at this point and then uh. Install some fixtures and receptacles and. Get it powered.
Is that, just to ask the obvious question? If the provisions are there, is that a next step we are going to do or is that something we're gonna put in the budget? What's the plan to to get to the finish?
Yeah, that would be either a winter project or a next year project, but yeah, something that we would we would budget for.
So the goal would be hopefully for next spring, we would have power at the.
Yeah, for the next pavilion use season.
Okay.
That there would be power there and then also we provide some some security lighting so the one the police patrol through. You know, there will be some lighting underneath the pavilion so they could see if there's any. Anyone heading out. That's the point. Uh, department activities, Indian Creek Road stalled uh. Twin fifteen inch pipes crossing just above the uh the quarry driveway. So we've doubled the previous capacity of water that's going across. The road there onto the nickel property and down into the over that then runs underneath the quarries parking lot until the break, so. Really don't foresee any issues there. Uh, with stormwater capacity. Uh, Booker Park Hockey Route, we completed the correct repairs. Uh, there's a a waiting period just for the kind of the the asphalt to. Sit before we do the uh the core resurfacing, so that's scheduled for uh the middle of this month. Uh, prep the trails for the summer wind. Trail paving. Do that this week. Not the the entire development, but uh the vast majority of it's gonna get uh resurfaced. Uh, painted speed home markings to golf course and did some various other markings throughout the township. Uh, we made some minor widening. Widening. And repairs to the right turn lane and Oak Drive at at Main Street. That was in pair. Uh, we're working on a bunch of uh pipe rehabs. In the past, we've done cured in place where we wasn't really ideal to do a dig and replace. Um, we've uh come across a relative, not a relative you do, but a different process. Uh, using a snap type. Pipe. Basically sections of pipe that are high density polyethylene is about an inch thick of wall thickness that essentially gets snapped together. And we push it through the existing pipe, then the annular space gets grounded. So then it becomes a a system and it's a. Fully rehabbed, so there's a number of locations that we're looking at. Uh, one is on Yoder. Near Free Road where there's a pipe that runs under a lot of curvy and it's real close to the house, right around the bend there. Uh, there's a house real close to the to the street. Um. The other one is Yoda Road uh near Culp Road. Uh, near Mr. Leo's house, we've got twin uh their arch pipes. So they can form the the round pipe into an arch with some blocking in it, keep it its art art shape, snap it together and then push it through. We're looking at that one as well. Uh, at the community center, there's a twenty four inch pipe that runs under Setfield Four. Be probably a fifteen to twenty foot cut if we had to excavate. So. Um, looking at that one, that was a long, that's about two hundred and eighty feet. So.
And you can pull it that far?
Sorry?
Uh, can you pull it that far on your route?
Push and pull?
Push and pull?
Yeah. Got the advantage of having a a fairly significant slope. Working into our advantage, so. And with the smaller. The benefit is, you know, you still maintain the the flow capacity because it's smooth board versus corrugated metal. Uh, so you don't lose any capacity. Velocity increases, but. Um, you still put the same throughput through the pipes, so then you can downsize the pipes fairly significantly to uh to allow you to get the the pipe through the host pipe. So, and then the last is uh. On Yoda Road from Burnell to Culp. I had this year's budget to do a dig and replace of that whole. System, but with this. If this is sizable pipe, it's thirty six inch pipe. But we're thinking that it would be much more cost effective if we can do this process. With with uh at that location rather than excavate everything out. We'd lose all the curb. We got the board new bird. Your driveway aprons, it just that's, you know, the the snowball that turns into the avalanche. That, you know, we we could avoid if we could do this this process, so. Getting pricing on that, hopefully that would be something to pursue for next year's budget.
Is that something we do in the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Uh. And lastly, we've uh reconfigured our fueling stations. Um, previously, we had two sets of steps where we would have to walk up the steps, turn on the pumps, walk down the steps and. Fuel up, walk back up the steps, record the numbers, turn the pump off, walk back down the steps. Well, we had an issue with one of our employees that. Kind of tripped as he was coming down the steps and kind of went headfirst into a dump truck, broke his fall with his arm. Ended up with two fractures in his whatever bone that is up in his shoulder. Uh, socket, so he's been out for six weeks now and. Probably gonna get it back this week going on modified duty, but. To avoid that potential, every we've essentially moved everything down to ground level. Switches, the pumps, the other handles, everything, everything's down at at ground level, moved the steps, so there's no. And also gotten hoses up off the ground because they were just. Flying around and potential trip hazards, so we've made a. Some significant improvements there from the safety standpoint, so.
Good, thank you.
That is all that I have, happy to answer any questions. And then I will turn over to Stephanie, sorry Stephanie.
Your work out there at uh Moyer and Main Street turned out nice, the widening for the uh that guys did my job.
Yeah, guys did do a nice job.
Doug, for Burger Mill Park back there with H K, are we gonna do some pictures of the area before they have their staging area?
Yes.
Make sure they have that as well.
Yep, yeah, once I have the schedule. For destruction video.
Perfect, they'd be better, thank you.
Good morning.
Stephanie.
All right, um, I'm here for a couple items. Um, the first item is the proposal for the two signal. Um. Design intersections at Maine and Huntsburger and Maine and Maple. These are the two intersections that were recently awarded the Green Light Go funding. Um. Through the state, um, while I don't believe there's an agreement in place yet, that'll be um. A little bit of time for the for that to come through to the township. Uh, we did want to forward this um proposal as far as the design services are concerned. It is also all the way through construction. And the tasks are related to the same project that's happening now, the sixty three and one thirteen signal upgrade. Um. There's a couple items to note. Um, this is a. Combined proposal for both intersections this time. It would be put out with a one bid package. Um, streamlining it, obviously, instead of. Having to go through the process for two separate intersections. Um. The. The fees are consistent with the grant application that was submitted last year as far as the percentage for. Um, the local match as well as the engineering and construction costs, so they're in line with um the match requirement. As well as what we estimated for the grant um with the application last year. So that is. Essentially it, they would move together. Um. And ultimately, like I said, ultimately, they bid together um to streamline that process, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Definitely, I have a question and, you know, with the rest of the board as well. One thing I saw is internally illuminated overhead street name signs. Um, I looked into them. Is that something that's necessary?
Yes.
Is it new? Uh, and why so is that A D A or?
It's uh as drivers age and our population uh age increases. It's a benefit to our older drivers. If you pass through. Quarry and Maine, that is an internally illuminated street name sign. As an example, so it's not something that's overly bright, it's more for the benefit of the board.
Land is a one thirteen. As well.
I've seen, and my question is just, you know, I didn't know, I wasn't as familiar, just Googling, I found maintenance things and whatnot too, so I was just curious about that, but I'll look into those intersection. Their L E D.
Yeah. I think there's a little bit of an issue with the contractor that they hang down a little lower, so they've got to make nations for that, but. From a a maintenance standpoint. I think we've had maybe one outage at Landis and. And one thirteen in the five and a half years that I've been here.
Okay.
So relatively made it free.
And I would just add that they are included in the township traffic signal specifications as well. Um, as a requirement moving forward, so anytime you see a new installation. Those illuminated signs should be um included.
I noticed and that was why I was asking if it was an A D A requirement, because I didn't see that, but that's why I was curious. Thank you.
Being an alternative. Yeah, wasn't directed to anyone in particular. Take a motion. Yeah, let's take a motion to approve the Bowman August thirty twenty twenty four proposal for. Traffic signal designing service for the intersections of Main Street and Huntsburger Lane and Main Street and Maple Avenue. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose a nay.
Great, thank you. I will note that that will not start until the signed agreement is received from the township. Um. So that everything can be submitted for reimbursement.
I will note I like the price of the second proposal better than the one we just authorized just.
Um, the second one is the Landis Road Bridge Inspection. This came about from our meeting last month where we talked about the Silver Road um conditions and then Doug and I had a conversation about Landis Road, which we know is a concern. Uh, but it is under the twenty foot span requirement at this time, so currently Landis Road is not on the bridge bill, the the P A Capital Bridge Bill. So it's not eligible uh for. The municipal bridge reimbursement program. Likewise, it is under the twenty foot length, which is typically inspected. By Penn Dot on behalf of the township, so you do not receive any uh bridge inspection reports for the for this structure. Um, and speaking with Doug, obviously, the condition of it is. Is deteriorated, um, and he did. Talk about doing a um an M B I S bridge inspection so that we could essentially document it the same way as we would. Any of the other local structures that are inspected by Penn Dot, identifying any of their. Issues, maintenance items, need. Repair needs, so on and so forth, and then. This round of the municipal bridge um did. Have a caveat that they could go to eight foot spans. However, none of those bridges are on the bridge bill, so that avoids that, but coming up in the future, if they do make that requirement. Um, again, or allow that requirement again, um. It would be important to get your over eight foot spans on the bridge bill when that opportunity arises, um, so this would be one more step. In. Documenting the need for that, for this structure, um, you know, if improvements or rehab doesn't happen ahead of ahead of that. Uh, so, long story short, this is for a. To complete an M B I S inspection of the existing Landis Road Bridge.
Is there any chance in the future we could make that some kind of culver or? Arch span or?
I I think there's a lot of different opportunity there, um, but again, it's going to be looking at the existing structure. We have to look at that spring house that is adjacent to it. We have to look at what is. Um, you know, gonna be ultimately proposed, is there gonna be a sidewalk, is there gonna be a trail, is there need to be? You know, so I think starting with this inspection is the first step to see what kind of condition that bridge is in and then going from there to determine what. Ultimately, it would be replaced with.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, wanted to make a motion to approve the Bowman uh. August twenty third twenty twenty four uh inspection of the uh Landis Road Bridge, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose, say nay. Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, I know, it's unfortunate that grant's not available, because that was very helpful with all of your, oh yes, Alford Road, Store Road, like, it's a benefit to us if we can get it. All right, anything else for Mr. Jones? Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Doug.
You.
Chief Medwin.
Yes, sir. Um. The funding for our license plate reader, the one we're dealing sixty three was approved. Uh, by the county commission, the August meeting, purchase orders have been sent to the vendor. Under is currently scheduled six to eight weeks out. Obviously, we want to make that the upgraded thirteen sixty three. So currently have a hard day. That is not scheduled, so once that is scheduled. Say that. Or. Get it done at the same time. Would be the most. Truly afterwards. Make the the least the. Zarable options of for the upgraded. Figure out the responsible. That kind, so.
Agree.
They should come in around the same time. Spirit.
Go from there.
Perfect.
So I have.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Next up, uh, building and zoning director, Mr. Beefeath.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. So last month, we we had eighty eight building permits, which is. Second uh. Second highest in the year. Um, first highest was that one hundred and fourteen. Building permit, I think we had it back. So the last zoning hearing board that we had, the one ninety three Kenzie Road, that was denied variance request for the. We do not have an upcoming zoning hearing board because the Hoffman Road, Mar Mar Home was through their zoning hearing board application. For that zoning hearing board, they had. Several variances that they wanted to. Pass the zoning hearing board for relief for approximately seventeen to do a six lot subdivision. Okay, so they withdrew. At the last planning commission, we had Shawada. On the agenda, Shawada was is the sixth dwelling unit. When development hit where up. And the planning commission recommended approval of that development, so that will be on your agenda tomorrow for discussion flavors. The planning commission elected William Earl as the vice person. And John Kennedy Spile. Recommended Scott Bamford. Sorry, it was David Goodman, David Goodman, thank you. David Goodman for the Indian Valley Region. Uh, planning commission.
That's an action we have to take.
Yes, okay. Yeah, that was just right.
Any level of the uh trail committee replacement?
No, I don't think we looked into the trail.
Okay, I I watched there's no PC, I didn't see all of it, I think I heard that, I was curious. We should put that out there to see who's. Yeah, interested from the planning commission for the trail.
Yeah. Also in the planning commission, we discussed the Village of Marshall District ordinance amendments and the planning commission actively recommended. That the that that graph be uh adopted, so Andy is working on the final documents. To prepare that for consideration to adopt. Which are sure. Upcoming planning commission meeting. This one. We have quite a big agenda. Item or items, covenant presidential adjournment coming in with seventeen thousand for building condition. And they're also gonna be adding around seven apartment space for one of the management. That's in the art of a zoning district. Although one ninety six Main Street is coming in for land development, recall back in. Probably goes April. You approve the conditional use. This is just the next stage in the process for land development. A new application came in seven twenty nine Harley's Bull Pike, which is. Just south of the village of Letterup, came in for a four lot subdivision, this is in the schedule plan. So no action is required, but they chose to. Uh, they requested review, so the township is reviewing it, they're gonna go in front of the planning commission. Seems pretty simple, I agree. And for eighty eight Harley's Bull Pike is. On the agenda, they submitted for land development. So after approximately two years in the schedule plan phase. You know, tweaking things and discussing with the community and with the planning commission, they decided to submit an official land development application, so that is awesome. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Michael. Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike?
Mike, I have one question, not necessarily relevant, but uh next to all, I think it's one eight nine street. Somebody reached out with a inquiry about how many parking spaces they can have. Um, I drove by a few times and I'm not sure what they have, but there are a lot of vehicles there. I was just curious what their space was, if we could look in that.
And one eighty nine.
I mean, is it, or they? It's the utility contract.
Yeah, next to all.
I think he's asking if I may, are they overparked for what their, for what their business is, do they have the right amount of?
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I was I was getting at the wall off and I had somebody who, you know, and to me, say, hey, Ken, you know, we're just talking about this over here, you know. Follow up on that, so.
What are they?
Oh, because they're not, they're not flowing out of the property. They, well, again, what they were talking about was, I guess, it steps, but again, that's their take, but there was, they pointed out, there was a lot and there was three deep. They said, you know, I don't know if we could have that many parking spaces here, just curious how much it is. I took a few pictures, I'd be happy to show you. Just that.
Are they cars or?
Or wheels?
It's the utility trucks.
On its side, on border, I can show you, but I just pictures I took.
They're not using them, they.
That. That is, and I mean, three, three or four cars, yeah, I saw right there, it's it's a lot of. Safety wise, how you now. I just wanted to throw it to you. I have to look into that. Thank you. That's all I have.
I apologize, ladies, Joe, and I have to head out for another meeting, so I'll see you all tomorrow night.
See you too.
All right, moving right along, uh, Mr. Pecos.
It's not personal, Joe, I know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the first item on the agenda is the. The August seventh. Uh, board. Minutes. French comments, records.
Just wanted to add in there underneath the uh. Volunteer. One, I know we had some discussion, I just wanted to add that we asked, there's uh F. I just, we thought it was important that we put in that we made sure that it's retroactive for this year as well, so anybody reading the minutes knows if they can still apply for that, now ask that question there.
Next item is the review of the agenda for tomorrow evening. Uh, under unfinished business, the ordinance twenty twenty four oh four municipal waste collection and recycling will be on the agenda for approval. The ordinance twenty twenty four oh five establishing the volunteer service tax credit pro- program. Is also on the uh. Agenda for consideration to adopt. The amendment to agreement to purchase liquor license dated March twenty first twenty twenty four, binding between lower self retention and the lower self retention for creation authority. Authorization execute, this is in regards to uh an extension of time. Uh, the extension would. Uh, would end September seventeenth if no action was taken. And the uh, the transfer would not go through, but because the L C B has taken. Some time to get somebody on this uh issue. Uh, we're needing to extend this in a ninety days, which they feel would be appropriate. Uh, time to get the uh extension completed and reviewed and approved by L C B. Uh, under new business resolution twenty twenty four thirteen, farmland preservation municipal contribution, plumber farm. That is on the uh, guys that would speak to a little bit uh. More fully, I can do that now if you. If you want me to, this is a plumber farm on Camp Wawa Road. Uh, this is nineteen acres. That appraised at twenty one thousand dollars per acre and the county uh agricultural land preservation board is requesting fifty nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. From uh the township, uh, this is something the township has done uh many times in the past, part of. Um, our open space uh preservation program. So this would. Preserve. This open space fully. Um, in perpetuity, so basically the township is birth of the county. Through the uh township and I believe the state funding will be purchasing uh. The basically the development rights. To this property. And keeping it in that.
Which happens to be adjacent to Camp Wawa Park, right?
Correct.
For that for a veteran situation.
So.
The span that.
Right.
Yeah.
And the next item is. Pudal, Pudal Center for County.
You know, this is something that we do support if other farmers consider it.
Uh, regulation twenty twenty-four fourteen, uh, setting forth minimum municipal obligation for police and non-uniform employee pension funds. Um, just uh, a note, this is a. Again, this really goes hand in hand with the way the uh, the investments for the pension funds. Go year to year, but this uh, will go down about two hundred thousand dollars over. This year's and above, so it's a good thing. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen mainland point acceptance of right of way. As a point, again, mainland point approval maintenance agreement, this is for the roads, uh, dedication for the roadways. Uh, shipping is taking. Part of this uh, project. This will be for. American Way. The short piece of Cory and June. And Hampton.
When will that be?
That will be effective uh, tomorrow, I guess, and then we'll send it to.
Yeah.
Liquid fuel.
Liquid fuel.
Uh, Letter Rock Cross Road, uh, Residential Development, seven oh three, seven oh nine Harley'sville Pike is Shihada.
Excuse me, Joe, D is just the mainland point approval.
Yes, a rural agreement for the same right project. Uh, Letter Rock Cross Road Residential Development, Shihada, this is a discussion of waivers. For that land development, which was recommended for approval by the planning commission. Uh, next item, F is police fire assistance for auto bodies, car exhibit, open house on Saturday, September twenty-eighth. And we will be adding G, which I knew there was something when I. I put into this agenda last week and I forgot it went on, the appointment of the Indian Valley uh, regional planning commission.
One more thing to add, I know we discussed uh, have a proclamation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Proclamation for the uh, Lily.
Eleven under state champions. So they're gonna, they're them and their families, they're gonna show up tomorrow night.
And the only other item we discussed is the planning commission vacancy if um. We had some left over from the last time we did this last year, and then we had a number of additional folks. Who submitted applications for letters of interest for this year. The board was interested in a particular candidate.
I guess I just want to know what the process is. I mean, we have some fantastic candidates that the. Give us their information.
And agreed to volunteer their time.
Yeah, I mean, it's awesome that we have this grateful people, but how do we, how do we go through?
Interesting you said, one thing I was really gonna bring up at the end of the year, you know, for the start of next year is why we did the supervisor, you know, obviously. I don't want to say it's a more important position, but you know, obviously it's something that we had to fill where we interviewed people here. And, you know, I didn't expect that we're gonna have vacancy, but this for future vacancies, is that something we want to do, you know, have people here maybe before meeting after meeting, you know, uh. We're on a different night. I know it's hard to get people together, but that's something I'd be open to because you're right, we have a great. List of people. Um, I don't know that everybody who reached out before, is there still an interest again?
We have massive book there and list, so.
Once we get the list, you know, definitely make sure, but that's, I'm with you, Ken. I don't know, it's a hard process there. We have a couple, since I've been in this capacity, we've appointed a few and. I think one time we only had one entrance, so that was relatively easier for.
This has been unusual.
I think it's wonderful. Hopefully people.
I mean, as far as the number of candidates.
Hopefully more people are watching our meetings and over there. No, I'm, I'm open to any idea whether we do something, have an interview here, just a quick Q and A like we did last time for this supervisor position. Again, with the, you know, curious your day and Chris's take on that too. What do you think, Keith?
Uh, I think a couple of things. The planning commission is an independent, separate body, right, who. Provide recommendations to the board of supervisors. These folks that we would be appointing would be to that board. Um, it might be, since there are so many quality candidates. Uh, a task for them to decide. Who they'd like to sit with them on that board. Um, it, because it, it's a working body, right? So not unlike what we do with the uh, trial committee, right? You have to. A lot of times it's several agreement amongst folks. People of like mine, so maybe it's a. Since there are so many folks, they, you know, make a recommendation to us, hey, we'd like you to appoint this person, right? Um, to our board. Uh, I, I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to this board picking. Uh, but I'm just saying there's, like you, you may have mentioned, there are a number of ways that we can go about this. What's the best way? I'm not. I have my own opinions, but. I'm, I'm open to the options.
I, I like that too. My only hesitancy with that and not, it does not apply now, but somewhere down the line, you know, you want to make sure. We get the right people to have the right motives involved in, in the PC. Right now we do, we have great people in there. I'm just saying, keep it that way.
Wait, ultimately, we have a decision. Ultimately, we have the deciding.
It doesn't, doesn't hurt to have. Factor, I guess, I wouldn't be opposed to that. Yeah, I mean, I'm open to an interview process. We're simply taking a look at all the resumes.
Look at them to weigh in, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and again, you know, for me too, just I'm open to either interviews or as we have been doing it, which is what I do is I go through all the resumes. I mean, obviously there's a lot of qualities. Tried to narrow it down to the top three and presented here for discussion.
Then maybe the top three and then interview the top three.
Right, I, I mean, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't be interested in bringing in all people to talk to.
Then again, we might ask all people and only get six or seven. Plus two, I believe for the board we did that. I don't know. I think we have one or two that didn't come and that helped solidify it too. Yeah, I think. Yeah, I mean.
It, it, maybe it's one of those things where. You know, you have the planning commission, give us your top two or three candidates. We'll interview them independently and what there. If that's. At least then we've narrowed the field in some way. It's delightful that we have so many folks. It's a shame we can't find places for them.
Right, man.
In my tenure here, this is highly unusual, but great.
Well, and just to, just to bring it up again, I think these are great discussions. I know we can't let it linger too long. So what would be our next goal for?
Well, I guess maybe we have the planning commission, so we'll make an appointment next month.
Yeah, perhaps discuss it or maybe meeting more at length then with the other two as well.
And if we're, if we're gonna share, we're gonna bring in three, we're.
The essence, I guess. And I mean, if we have a timing, we'll see how many, I think it's worthwhile to see how many people want to come to the interview too. We only have, hey, five people say I'll come. Why not just do those five too?
Somewhere we just haven't been good to see.
Okay, well.
Sounds good.
Uh, the final thing I do have is to introduce uh, the township's uh. Newest employee, uh, Grace Kelly. Uh, started on August nineteenth. Uh, Grace is the special projects coordinator. She'll be working closely with Doug and Holly. If there is issues, mostly uh, they should look at Grant, being kind of a grant coordinator and house grant coordinator. Because we do have so many. Applications. Active in that. Lane of. Becking as well as uh, on the social media stuff that she, I know, taking that ball and really started to run with it and. I was put together a, a. PowerPoint presentation, if you notice, up in the lobby, which has all the latest up to date information, looking at, updating. Uh, getting some quotes, we're updating the uh, county website. That has been. How many years?
I think we did that.
Eight or nine years ago.
You may have to blow the dust off it, but good luck.
And many other things working with them. Midas as well. She comes to us from a township resident. She comes to us from Washington College, just graduated. The Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Science and uh, minor in. Museum Field and Community Education. As uh, event coordinator and marketing assistant for the Center for Environment Society. Um, is that, was that how you call it? Also worked for the department, the Maryland Department of Environmental Science has a. Background GIS. Which is obviously a real plus. So we're very excited to have you aboard.
So lucky to have you, to be honest. Well, welcome. Nice to meet you.
I know uh, the communications committee would be very excited to hear. I have a lot of ideas that. Throw your way too. Fantastic, thank you.
Good job, Jennifer.
And that's all I have.
Do we have need this morning for executive session?
We do not, we do not. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move second. Move the second, all in favor say aye. All right, opposed say nay. We are done for this morning.